I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first order of business, of course, is to make a decision. I'd like to take this suit of the ad from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. First order of business, has everybody got the agenda? Get a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion approved. Next order of business to approve the minutes of regular council meeting for October 15th.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for October 15th regular council meeting.
Second. We've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carry. To approve the list of claims for October 2019. Anybody got any questions on any of them?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. To accept the financial status of the general wire sewer funds as of October 31st. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. To schedule a truth in taxation public meeting for the 17th of December 2019, 6:30 prior to the regular council meeting. We'll need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. It'll be at 5:30 or 11 o'clock?
Um, we can do it just right. It's just to send the levy. So we can just do it right before the meeting and then start the meeting after that if you guys want to.
Okay. To accept the liquor store statement for October 2019.
Aye. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Review West Main Street engineering proposal. On that, we've got a preliminary estimate back today on a total reconstruct of the project. We have two different methods of funding the project. Actually, this third one would be an assessment, but we looked at two that are very feasible. A little more study on them and obviously with the engineer's estimate back and the total reconstruction, I'll have to give Joe a call. He had some storm sewer pipe in there and a few things that I did not quite understand. So we're a little out on that yet, but we're moving forward on that. We did have a preliminary estimate, total reconstruction, stuff like that. And I think we have to discuss that and see also our funding because we have obligations in 130 and several other streets that are on the list of construction to do and just go through our financials and all that, which now is available. I think we can put together a pretty good plan of what it's, you know, how much money we could spend to do this.
Yep. I would just like to, once we get the final figures in, what we're going to do, can we have another open meeting with residents that live in that area?
Well, for sure, yeah. Once we have a, we have a general idea of what we want to do there, there's some diagonal parking, some horizontal parking, some curb and gutter and that. And then I think the biggest contention there is actually on the center line of the street becomes the biggest contention. I think they're all in agreement that some kind of a parking drainage improvements and things like that are there. So, yeah, we'll definitely have a meeting soon.
Just one other thing. I know you're talking about vacating a portion of the street on the south side.
That would be, that was a vacation if some of them people are on the street right away. I think that's something will happen and now they'll be appointed the zoning commission. And once we get a preliminary survey, they may not be on the street right away. Well, if they're on the street right away, obviously we've got to accomplish it. But they may not be on the street right away. So that kind of go hands in hands with the preliminary survey where the property lines really are. There's all kinds of speculations on where they are and where they will be. But again, that'll be something that the zoning committee will take up and make a recommendation to us.
Because I'm just thinking if you vacate some area on the south side, you should do it on the north side.
Why would we be doing something like that above?
Well, the London sidewalk's going to be really close to their house for London.
Again, you know, until we get some surveys, I don't think that is going to be a question. You know, it might be a question, but again, that's where we'll have to get the property lines, see how close they're going to be, and then we can do that. So those are the questions that we will have at the meeting. And once you get some survey lines and an actual drawing, draw it up, then you'll be able to tell where things are going to actually be.
Just one other thing. Took my truck today, I measured the width. I opened the doors halfway on both sides and it come up 11 feet. I know you were saying nine feet.
Nine feet.
Yeah. You said each one is going to be nine feet wide?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. But if you had nine feet-
Actually, I didn't say that. The county engineering firm said that, Bob.
If you had nine feet with the truck, you're going to open the door ready to another car.
Yeah, that's, again, whether you have nine feet, 10 feet, 11 feet. I know the county has designed nine feet on the thing. And that must be a standard that they picked up somewhere. I know, I did question horizontal parking. Horizontal can be eight to 10, you know, along the curb line. So these are numbers they picked up and that's why we hired an engineering firm. Again, nine feet, you know, did you open them all the way?
If I opened them all the way, it was going 12.
Okay. Well, there's plenty of room. You know, that one foot more on each parking lot or 10 feet on each parking lot. Whether we get 31 parking lots or 30 parking lots, that'll be in the design process. That'll, Bob, that all comes in on the striping of it. Where the curb is, whether you fit nine in there or 10 in there, again.
But not everybody's going to park exactly in the line, you know?
Well, then we'll just make, we'll just strip it at all and park wherever they want to park. And then you don't matter how wide they are. I'm just saying all we're going to do is put a curb and gutter. They say it takes nine feet. If we don't strip it at all, they can use 10 or 12 or seven or eight. The striping is to try to keep people in order so they don't take 15 feet. If they use 12, nothing you can really do about it. You know what I mean? So whatever fits in there, fits in there. That's just going to allow us to get a curb line. How many fit in there is irrelevant, really. You know, the only thing we've got to make sure is where that, let's say a garage entrance or private entrance like into the Joneses' house is, that that has a curb cut. And I think Hellboy's have a garage where they'll need a curb cut. You know, some of them do, some of them don't. So those are the irrelevant things. How many people park on the street? You know, like I said, wouldn't you strip it nine feet wide or 12, don't we really have? Yes, Charles?
Is it my understanding that the council has already voted in favor of basically curbing the residential and commercial parking?
No, there's been no vote on anything. This is just, we, like I said, everything has been done. I basically have done it. I've talked to the engineer, I've met with the citizens, most of you anyway. And we're trying to get as much information as we can. You know, the cost of it, a preliminary design. Again, like you say, he picks up nine feet, you know, things like that. When we have it striped, strip it to 10 feet, strip it to 12 feet. Those are the things that really don't change a project, but we can be discussed at the project. And, you know, that's why I leave it to, you know, like an engineer like Joe Sutherland that actually knows all the rules and regulations, know what works. And you're the doctor, I'd leave taking my tonsils out to you rather than Bob, you know? And that's the reason why. So, but we do have some preliminary costs now. And now we have to fit it into our budget and see how it can, you know, our budget constraints. And I think things are all-
And there might be design changes because it's not going to work out and stuff.
Yeah. And again, I think these are all things that should be looked at, you know, costs and everything else, how we can do them, what we can do for the money we got, how much money we got. So these are just things that I think we're doing fine. And I know, like I said, I think the biggest issue here in, that's in dispute is where the center line of the street should be. And without the property lines, you know, that'll show in the survey. It's my opinion that all you need is about 66 feet. Well, I know that's all you need. Four street widths, diagonal parking on both sides. Or, you know, yeah, diagonal parking on both sides, you need 66 feet. And that would give you also a five-foot sidewalk. So that much you need, you know, to encompass the project. Where the center line is, again, I think that's what's in contention. And that's what we'll find out with the surveys and look at the design on that side.
How many parking spots would we gain by doing this?
Oh. Nine or 12 feet, Bob, nine or 12 feet. Again, you know, again, in the design, once they get to lay that out, you'll probably, well, right now, what do we have for parking spots? They're parking in their yards, they're parking this way, they're parking that way. I think originally there's probably, there'd probably go to be along that street, there's probably going to be in the neighborhood or somewhere with the drive, with the cuts and everything, around 20, 25, 25 parking spots, I suppose. Are you shaking your head?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay. Well, again, that's what I mean, set plans. Yes, Charles?
It's just, again, the basic idea, though.
Can you speak up?
The basic idea, or my concern really is, you know, right now and for a long time, there's just been a narrow road there. Currently, 16 feet wide on the west side of Arden's property is 18 feet wide. And so all of a sudden, we have 66 feet wide to turn into green with the tar. And if that's, I mean, you guys definitely have the authority to do that, but is that what the community wants?
Well, you have, they're currently using 66 feet right now, Charles.
Oh.
Oh, absolutely. The parking is on one side by Joneses'. They do vertical parking, they do that parallel parking, they go straight in. They don't even go in at an angle. On the other side, Cassick's goes straight in. That's 20 some feet apiece. That's 40. Your road is roughly 18 to 20, it varies, but say 20 feet wide. Well, there's your 60 right there.
It's 16 and the trees on the sidewalk-
The trees will go, Charles.
Yeah, so we're turning green with the tar. I mean, we got 16 feet of tar, now we're going to have 66 feet. And that's, I think, really what you have to decide. If that's the way you want, if that's the way you want.
Yeah.
But it's sure going to change it. A lot of trees are going to go and a lot of grass is going to go.
It'll be 60 feet of tar, Charles, and five feet of sidewalk. And then you've got the back of the curb that is five feet, or six inches wide. So you'll have 60 feet of blacktop. Okay?
But it's a big change, blacktop, the side grass, trees.
Okay. You know, let's bring this to a-
Change is good.
They are parking there already. Whether they want to park a blacktop or want to keep parking on the rock and the gravel, that'll be the choice they have to make. That's what they're doing right now. I see it, no denying it. Farther down the street, just past Joneses', it'll probably, we're probably starting at Joneses' driveway, on that side will probably go horizontal. You know, it'll go, it's like the 60 feet of blacktop up to Joneses' driveway. And then his yard will get affected by the diagonal, it'll be about 10 feet less in front of his driveway. Again, you'll take a look at the plans.
Well, then you don't get, you're pointing that we got to have some plans to-
And I think a couple of other things they're trying to do by with the curb and gutter that's being installed, you know, the drainage issues you have. That'll level the road out, put a curb there and funnel most of the water. It should funnel all the water, north and south, or I mean, east and west. There will be an occasional flood, I guess it could jump the curb and go into your driveway, into your yard, but right now, if they raise that edge.
The garage at Arden's shows on the early pictures, I've been able to see it right here. And so that's been there a long time. And the engineering proposal says we got to add, we can't lower. And basically, if the height of the rock there is extended north to within five feet of the garage, it'll be like a four-foot drop in five feet to get into the garage. You just won't be able to do it.
Where are we talking again?
Arden's Garage.
And I don't know which one that is, or she's got several of them? Or is it?
It's a old stone building. And it has a garage door opening towards the-
Street and road, yeah.
And the proposal would, well, we don't know yet, we don't get the survey. But it looks like it would come with five feet of the garage. And it looks to me it could be about four feet higher of the curb elevation. But that's a little, I'm not, you yell, it's a-
Charles, I can meet with you if you're around tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you'd like to meet tomorrow, could you give me a call? Because I didn't see where there'd be any entrance problems at any property. The only issue I seen would be at Cassick's. And theirs was about a two-foot issue where they would, they would need about a 75, you know, 50 to 75 feet possibly retaining all, but then there'd be steps going down and there'd be property that they could, and they don't drive into their property. By the time it got to the Arden property or you guys' property, it's going to be pretty flush. There was no, you know, I didn't see, I didn't see that issue. Meeting with Joe Sutherland, we looked at that. So you must be seeing something I don't see or might not understand. So if you want to meet tomorrow, let's go over that. I'd be glad, because obviously we don't want to get into something where we're going to have an issue. You can't. The purpose here is to make things better for the residents of that area and also for the other citizens of Rainier. And that's what we're trying to accomplish here. So I'll be glad to meet with anybody tomorrow. I'll be available. Mr. Joe?
Yeah, I've been thinking about this a lot.
Yep.
Reviewing a number of things. Talked to a lawyer I know very well about adverse possession, which is a state statute. Hey, it may not apply, we're still looking at it. Anyway, put that aside. I am concerned with a change in residential area for a commercial enrichment. I don't see an enrichment for the residents I'm meeting. I see enrichment on the other side of the highway. Number two, we were told that there's enough parking for the building, number one. Number two would be much easier to acquire the main DNR lot because now the bullet range is kind of pretty much unusable on, on Woodyville, Doc. So that would be the easiest outcome and also to develop a new Wood Street area. That would eliminate any of the southern fallopals, straining up a community that everybody's liked for 112 years. No development in 112 years. 1907, that's the plan, do the math. Why do we need to strill something for 112 years everybody is? I think, sounds to me pretty satisfying. I am too. My family, and the old thing about, oh, you're not a- My family goes back to that bridge. My great uncle was punching roots in that deal. So I think I've got a little talk on that one too, just as a side. And community benefit. We have no community services. I was here a long enough. We used to have a store, we used to have a gas station, we used to have a lot of stuff. What do we got now? Nothing. But now we're supposed to give up property for commercial benefit? But it's not commercial benefit to the unions.
First of all, I don't think, nobody's asked me to give up any property. I think, I'm kind of perplexed here.
Don't turn it, don't turn it. Don't turn it. It's, yeah, yeah, I can, I know it's government property, okay?
Okay.
Don't mess. Okay? But is it to a community benefit, not to a commercial benefit? That's my, there's a melt over there and nothing to do with street development. If that's going to happen, just satisfy everything. And why destroy, again, green space, stuff people, I've had people, friends and stuff go out there like, oh gee, it looks like we're in Maine or Vermont or something. And now we're going to pave it, knock trees down and possibly knock out the park. And I have another issue with park that has nothing to do with what we're discussing right now. We can discuss that aside. Anyway, that's where I come from.
Well, I appreciate your opinion on this.
Yeah.
And I just thought, see, I'm a little perplexed because we were petitioned orally by the residents, Cassick's, you were here.
Choice is?
Choices to improve the parking, basically blacktop where they currently are parking on both sides of the road. There's no denying that they park in front of their houses. I bet if we went up there right now. And so all this did was to find the areas that they're currently parking in and they're going to be blacktop. The only thing, we're going to level them off a little to protect the drainage that runs into Hellboy's property and Cassick's property by leveling up that side of the road. Taking a little bit of the rock down right away so there wasn't quite as steep as approach. You know, if you want to keep parking on grass and parking on the rock, I guess we can continue to do that. I have no issue with that. And we can keep it as cute as you want. Again, like I have a little problem with this when that's where he says you've been here for 100 years and we're losing this and losing that, but you never want to change anything. This is an improvement that was requested. And I've gone out a lot of time, my own time, and done this. So if you don't want it, I'll solely note it and I'll drop all things on it. But I think you should check with your neighbors and check if it's just you you're thinking about. Because like I said, I don't see anything changing as far as the width of the street. There could be blacktop where that rock is now and where gravel is in front of Hellboy's and in front of Cassick's. And that would be leveled off. And that's a primary, if you don't want to, we have ideas of putting the sidewalk in there so people could access the park, which I think is only fair. That's for the rest of the citizens. You may not want the sidewalk, but it ain't even on your side of the road. But again, so do we know? We'll have a hearing on this because we have plenty of people in streets that could gladly take new blacktop, new curb and gutter without opposition. So, thank you.
But change for the essence of change doesn't mean it's good. Always understand that. Change for the essence of change doesn't mean it's good.
And also understand you keep doing what you're doing, get what you got.
And I would say for Dan and Rod and Casey, this, that would be love. They definitely need that. You can stop right there. You don't need to go further.
If you were listening, I said we want to stop at your driveway. Did you hear that part? That the plan was to stop that diagonal parking at your driveway. And that still can be done. Or it can go beyond, whatever, it don't matter to me. Anyway, you got your opinion and we'll have more meetings on this, so.
Thank you, Lightning, for letting us-
Well, yeah, that's all it is. We're just responding to the request we have. And I got a professional engineer to give me his opinion, how much you have to do. But if you don't want it, certainly you have a voice in it. We're not anxious to spend money where nobody wants it, that's for damn sure. I don't want to seem upset about it, but I talked to you in your own favor last week and all of a sudden you think about it more and that's fine. So anyway, you just, maybe it's the design you're not in favor of, so that's fine. We'll look at it again. To approve the appointments for the land commission, for the zoning commission. I gave the list and we'll get a motion on that.
I'll get a motion to approve.
Yeah, I have to literally write their names right now.
Berta, Joanne.
Yeah, Joanne would be our representative. Mary Ann Cassick, Mr. Carter, Berta and Jeff and Lab. Get a motion to approve their claims.
I'll make that motion to approve the commissioners to the zoning committee.
I'll second. We've got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Just to remind you that November 25th, a special budget meeting at 6:00 PM. I want you really to review that budget. And again, you know, I'll still continue with preliminary costs in this and see how it fit in if we choose to do it, if we don't choose to do it, whether we can formally do it, whether we do it or not, that'll be a separate decision. So, okay. All right. Anything, open meeting and any questions? Anybody got any questions? Yes, sir?
I don't think this has been addressed at any of our meetings, but I just want to throw it out there. We have no police force for this town.
Sure you do.
No enforcement arm. If things don't go according to plan with the street rejuvenation, who's going to enforce these laws? It seems the county is getting weary of settling some of our disputes over the way things look in town and we want to bring somebody to court for this and the attorney for the county doesn't want a prosecutor because he's got more important things to do. Who can we depend on to get things, keep things in order if we have tourists that come in here and want to do their own thing? They don't want a park guy and they want to hold their boat and do their own little thing. Who's going to enforce that? You guys?
Sheriff. We use the sheriff's and he's responded to our, any requests we ask for.
There's a limit to what he's going to respond to, though, if it starts to become-
Well, we haven't hit that limit and I haven't seen any, anything that seemed to look too close to get into it. I don't see a whole lot of issues we have with enforcement. I think the worst was that Todd said we were speeding up and down, you know, on Main Street here. And again, did they get the stop sign up yet? Oh, boy. If we are-
No, I saw that, actually, when all this-
They drilled the holes, they got the-
Before your date, I saw all the deals.
And all that stuff, so the signs coming.
Thank you.
And so, you know, I do, I do know they take a lot longer to respond, but not, not in the sheriff's particular case as far as I've been aware of anything. But I understand the concern, but I haven't seen it yet. And if we do get a lot of issues on that, we will, you know, we'll have to do something. Right now, I don't see the issue.
The sheriff was, as a, grew up in Rainier, the sheriff. He'll be here if you call, anything. I don't know what your excuses would be, but Perrin will be here, guaranteed.
I feel-
Do you count me?
Yeah, but we're the closest, we're the closest to it, to the jail, so.
I do see the deputy runs around here, but we have to stop him.
Was there anything else?
Well, you know how it is when we have an accident on the road or anything. Every officer I know, I've seen a car accident and there's been gate wardens there, park rangers there, there's been city police there, highway patrol there, the sheriff's-
There's been city police there, highway patrol there, and sheriffs all there. And all it is is just one little accident. I mean, you don't have to, if something comes up and they get it, the call goes out, it goes to all the law enforcement agencies. Somebody will respond. It might not be the sheriff immediately, but the city police will be here. A highway patrol will be here, or even the park service.
Sure, that's fine, for me either.
No, no, it's a-
What about if it's just a parking issue? For sure, there's an awful lot running for that.
They'll, they'll take care of it.
That, that I can't tell you, but I, I can't, I can't reply to what may or may not-
I mean, I'm not here just picking away. I'm just trying to think out loud before it actually happens and we have no plan.
Well, you know, we're working continually on trying, you know, since I got here, we had the railroad issues with quiet and stuff like that, and we've had parking issues. Besides our total over-economic outlook of the city, where it's going, light and all these other things. We're addressing them. We've got another meeting set up on, you know, on this boat landing with potential parking from that. So, the parking issues, I don't know whether it's ever gonna go away. I've got some other ideas on it that I'm gonna run by the council. And we'll see what it is. I know we, we made some improvements with the county. There should be additional parking down here, the DNR. Again, you mentioned, Jones, you mentioned that DNR parking lot. That all hinges on, on the deposition of how this, this parking lot takes place. They're not gonna give up that parking lot until they have another parking lot that replaces for this boat landing. It's that simple. I mean, I was told that by the DNR. You get a different boat landing, you get a different parking lot. So, so those things are all possible, but they're not as easy as you think. There's several monies involved and different landowners and all that stuff. So, you know, again, we'll, we're gonna look at this. Again, something that we, we continue working on. I don't think you can stop. Bob?
Just one thing about the rain coming down and looked, I don't know if it was Nick or maybe it wasn't, scraped the ground, got it looking good, but there is some roots that are small growing out in there that could be cut off. And there's a piece of wire sticking out. And then around the cement where the boards are sitting on-
Inside or outside?
Inside, should be cleaned up, you know?
That's good. I, I'll mention it to Nick or we can maybe tomorrow, just, I'll clean it up. As the snow melted, I'm sure he's making, you know, we had a little snow in that frost, so we'll, we'll get on that 'cause we want it as smooth and as level as we can. Can you get all the glasses up?
Yeah.
So, the glass is up. I talked to a friend of mine who volunteered his services and I wanna thank Corey Olson. He put the rock back on the fire pit, no charge or anything else. So, it's a nice donation from him. He's been working at the distillery here, so labor and stuff, so he, he likes the commutes. So, he come down, did that on his own.
He was there for two days.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, that's a big deal. So, it's, all of those little things help, so. Okay, if there's nothing else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, I'll figure.